All right. We call the meeting to order. It's being held in the council chambers, which are open for public attendance and participation. The meeting will also be livestreamed for public viewing but not participation at the link identified in the agenda. Email comments sent and received by the city clerk at least 24 hours before tonight's meeting were distributed to the city council prior to tonight's meeting. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Shaw.
Here.
Vice Mayor Boom Garden.
Here.
Councilmember Cole.
Here.
Councilmember Kershner.
Here.
Councilmember Briskowli.
Here.
All righty, thank you. We have a closed session this evening. Mr. Chaffin, will you read the closed session item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have one item for closed session. It's a confirmed rural property negotiator pursuant to government code 254956.8. The property is 433 Plumas Boulevard, Yuba City, California, 959901, APN 05230-025. The negotiator is Robert Bindorf, interim city manager. The negotiating parties are Sutter Health and under negotiations pricing terms of payment and development. Thank you.
And the high bidder was who? All right, any comments from the public? Seeing nobody here, we will move into closed session. All right, we will call this evening's meeting to order. This meeting is being held in the council chambers, which are open for public attendance and participation. Meeting will also be livestreamed for public viewing but not participation at the link identified in the agenda. Emailed comments sent and received by the city clerk at least 24 hours before tonight's meeting were distributed to the city council prior to this meeting tonight. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Shaw.
Here.
Vice Mayor Boom Garden.
Here.
Councilmember Cole.
Here.
Councilmember Kershner.
Here.
Councilmember Briskowli.
Here.
All right, if we will stand. Tonight's invocation is going to be given by Yuba City PD Chaplain Ron Fortenberry, and then that will be followed by our Pledge of Allegiance by our Chief, Chief Runyon.
Would you join me in prayer? Heavenly Father, as we embark on this holy week, we are filled with hope because of the resurrection of Jesus. Thank you for giving us that hope, both for this life and next. Tonight, as the dispatchers, also known as the Voices in the Dark of the Yuba City Police Department, are recognized, I pray you will continue to bless them with courage and peace. These talented first responders are the first voices to be heard during a crisis, as they listen to frantic callers, provide lifesaving instructions, and sometimes face the helplessness of being unable to intervene directly, which can be so emotionally draining. So I pray that you will bless them with new courage and peace as they continue to serve the citizens of Yuba City. As we celebrate, we also remember that there are several members of our community who are wrestling with their grief, caused by the death of one of our local officers. Would you please bring healing and comfort to our law enforcement family? Would you please remind them that your word declares that they are blessed because they are the city's peacemakers, so they will be called the children of God? Please bless these brave men and women who continue to confront danger on a daily basis, so our families can live the lives in peace. I pray for the city council meeting tonight. Father, give the council members wisdom and guidance as they deliberate on the items before them. May every decision be righteous in your sight, for our benefit and for your glory. We ask all these things in the name of our risen Lord Jesus. Amen.
All right, Mr. Chaffin, do we have anything to report in closed session this evening?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There was no reportable action taken in closed session.
Okay, perfect. Then we are going to move on to ceremonial presentations tonight. We get to recognize National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, and so I would like to invite all of our Yuba City dispatchers and communicators to come on down and join us at the front. So, you know, before we get into the recognition, I just want to say I know on behalf of all of the city council, our entire team, all the residents of our city, thank you guys for what you do. Because as you heard when Ron was saying the prayer, you know, we call, I just actually called yesterday for an accident, and you guys are there. When people on the other end do not know what to do, you are that calm in the storm. And you go quietly into the night, nobody knows your face, and this and that, but you make such an impact. And I want to say on behalf of all of us, thank you for everything that you guys do. And with that, we are going to recognize National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, April 13 through the 19th. Whereas the Yuba City Police Department, public safety dispatchers are a vital role in the protection of human life and property in our community, public safety dispatchers are responsible for responding to telephone calls from the public, for police, fire, and emergency medical assistance, and for dispatching said assistance to help save the lives and property of our citizens. Yuba City dispatchers endure long shifts, and boy, you guys have seen those, haven't you? Yep. Long shifts while handling life and death emergencies, all the while setting high standards in the performance of their duties, in a manner that has earned recognition by the California 911 Commission. Their service and dedication to duty has resulted in countless lives saved, injuries minimized, and property damage reduced. Dispatchers are typically the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services, and are a vital link for our police and fire personnel by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them with the critical information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during their performance on the job in the past year. Now therefore, it resolved that I, Dave Shaw, Mayor of the City of Yuba City, on behalf of the entire city council and citizens we serve, do hereby recognize and honor our Yuba City public safety dispatchers, who diligence and professionalism keep our city, citizens, and first responders safe. Let's give them a round of applause. What do any of you guys like to say anything? Chief Runyon, it's to you, sir. Would you like to come down and say a few words?
I've always said this about their job, but I could not, certainly the one job in the police department I could not do. I don't know how they do it, the multitasking, the long, late night shifts. A lot of times when officers are tired, we go in there to help us stay awake, because they always, they're always on top of it. An amazing thing tonight is, I already made a comment to them, there's more dispatchers standing here than we had three, four years ago. It's amazing how we've gotten back to full staff or close to full staff in dispatch, and it's been great, great members of our team. So, thank you.
All right, Christie, did you want to take a picture real quick? All right, we're going to still take a few more pictures, but before we do that, you've heard all of us at the council, I know over time, talk about we're a team. And that's how we see all of us that work for the City of Yuba City. And we have a new team member that has recently come to join us, that I know has a history back through LE. And so I'd like to ask our interim city manager, Robert Bindorf, if he'd like to say a few words tonight.
So I guess confessional, right? So when I started my law enforcement career, that was my first job as a dispatcher, and not only with the Sutter County Sheriff's Office when I was a teenager, but also with Yuba County when I was a teenager. And I used to, years later in Yuba County, when I would talk with Sheriff Durfer, we said, hey, this county administrator job, just give me the set of keys to a patrol car. I'd love to go back to doing that. It would be a lot easier than working with all these elected officials. Not Yuba City, just the other side of the road. But I never asked him to put me back in dispatch, because doing that job again, I couldn't imagine doing it. It was one of the toughest things I ever did. And I never really appreciated it more until I was out on patrol, and heard you all pretty much save our, save our business all the time from ourselves. So I just wanted to say thank you, and hats off to all of you for hanging in there and doing such a great job for the City of Yuba City. Thanks.
Thank you. And, keeping the tradition, we'd like to ask all of our uniformed officers to come down and join you, because you guys work in that same department, and the council will go around on the back. All right, let's move on to public communication, appearance of interest citizens. You're welcome and encouraged to participate in this meeting. Public comment is taking on action items appearing on the consent calendar, or business items on the city's juris, business items on the agenda when they are called. Public comment on any other items within the scope of the city's jurisdiction, including those not listed on the agenda, will be considered at this time. Public comment is limited three minutes per speaker. Members of the public submitting written requests at least 24 hours prior to tonight's meeting will be allotted five minutes to comment per speaker. Representative comments may be limited, and large groups are encouraged to select representative to express the opinions of the group. Do we have anyone that would like to speak under public communication tonight? Anyone that likes to speak tonight under public communication? Okay. Hearing none, we're going to move on, go to the consent calendar. All matters are listed under consent calendar, are considered to be routine, and can be enacted in one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time that council votes on the motion, unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar for individual actions. With that, we do have one request, Vice Mayor.
Yes, if we could pull number four.
Okay, we will pull item four, and we will move that to be our first business item. The council will have any other items they'd like pulled from consent?
Through the mayor. Just one clarification to item three, the title for the April 1st minutes or minute draft. Thank you.
Okay. All right, hearing none, is there any public comments on consent calendar items three through 12, with the exception of item four? Any public comment? Any public comment? Hearing none, I will bring it back to the council for action on consent calendar items three through 12, with the exception of item four.
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
I can make a motion to approve consent counter items three through 12, with the exception of four, with the amended item three.
Okay, do I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, motion carries. We will then now go into business items, and the first business item we will pick up is item four, which is the 2025 resurfacing project plans and specifications. And Mr. Moody, you have the floor, sir.
All right, so good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. So the item before you, I don't have a nice presentation for this one. I wish I had the map in the agenda, in the staff report. And so this is a maintenance project. It's about $1.8 million. And when I say road maintenance project, so the item before you, it's a 2025 resurfacing project, and it's the plan, approved the plan specifications and estimate, so that staff can then put it out to bid, and then we'll receive the bids, and then we'll come back to city council to authorize award. And we're projecting a, we're putting, staff has put together a project that's about $1.8 million. This is a residential resurfacing project, so basically what that means is slurry seals. So we're using some cape, some asphalt rubber. That is a product that we've kind of grown to like in Yuba City. It's got a little bit more elasticity, it helps absorb the cracks. We get a little bit of a grant reimbursement through, through the state for using reused tires. And so there's a project list at the very end of the, the staff report, as part of that identified those areas. I would note that it's spread across the city, but a little bit less in District Four. And so there's a lot of effort with Walton Avenue going on behind the scenes to try to push that forward. And so the resurfacing, it's really brought forward based on, so we have a huge need, the needs bigger than dollars available. We have a software system that kind of tells us to basically try to keep good roads good. But at the same time, that needs bigger, and we also have bad roads that need to be taken care of. And so engineering tries to balance those, where we're getting a lot of roads that are getting to a, to a spot that really need to have something done with, with this rubber, to kind of keep them glued together. And then we also try to build a project, so it just makes sense. You're not doing a short session here and a short section here, that it's, that it's efficient, that we're getting the most bang for our buck. And so, again, with that, it's, it's to put out a maintenance resurfacing project that will probably go out this summer, and I'd be happy to answer any questions for it.
Thank you, Mr. Moody. Is there any questions from the council?
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
Ben, I recall back, probably about 15, 20 years ago, you were slurring some streets in my area. Is this a better product than what you had before?
If it's a, if it's a rubber cape seal, it's a better product. It's a similar product. The slurry seal is just, it's oil, sand, and water. And it lasts five years. It's a thin surface treatment, but the cracks come right through. The rubber, a good example is just outside of City Hall on Civic Center. If you come south from Butte House down to the, that stop sign, the, it used to be the opposite about 10 years ago, that everything south to 20 was just a mess. And we glued it together with a rubber cape seal. And so you could see that product to the south. And but now what you see happening is everything to the north that we slurry sealed is falling apart. And so with this project, they'll put that, they'll put that rubber cape seal on it. And so there is a list that they call for that Type II rubber cape seal, and it's definitely going to be covered. There's no chip, there's no exposed rock, it's not a chip. People don't love it, but we're definitely lessons learned over time, is that we try to, when we apply it, we try to make sure we give advance notice, coordinate with the garbage and mail pickup, and we access to and from people's properties. And then we try to roll it, where they have some processes where they roll it, even though when it's wet and setting up, to try to compact that rock, so you don't get as much rock unraveling that causes a lot of problems. But nobody's excited about this project, except the engineers. It helps glue things together, but it's not a new asphalt overlay.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the council?
Just a comment.
Yes, sir.
Through the mayor. Ben, I'll tell you, I'm excited about it. And I appreciate the on-the-spot discussion. I think the reason I pulled this mostly was just to make sure the public was aware that there are things going on with the roads. And while this isn't necessarily the end-all-be-all, it's not a road rehab project, it's preventive maintenance. And if we can prevent, if we can prevent catastrophes ahead of time, it becomes far less expensive for us to take care of these roads. This slurry seal with the new stuff is going to be a, you know, I don't know how long that lasts. I don't need to know right now. But my, I guess my theory here is, is that if people understand that, that number one, we're putting this on to preserve the current road base, road, so that it doesn't deteriorate into a position where we have to do a total rehab, that saves us money. Because I know I have received comments in the past, why are you doing this? We need the whole road repaired. And I'm going, well, this keeps that from having the whole road repaired. At least it buys us time. And that's what we need right now, because, again, I mentioned this at the last meeting, at Secog, it's coming through loud and clear, and their Transportation Committee, is that funds from the state, as much as we have come to rely on them for road rehab, are going to be, be thin. It's going to be a skinny couple years for right now. So anything that we can do to preserve, prolong the roads, I applaud what you guys are doing. And I, like I said at the beginning, I'm excited, because I know this will help us in the long run. Thank you.
Any other comments from the council?
I have a question for Ben, through the mayor.
Yes.
Just for clarification, for the time being, would it be possible for the engineers to choose a new area each year that they're going to kind of attack with this type of project?
Yes, absolutely. That plays into it. And so ideally, you know, ideally, you're on a 10-year, seven to 10-year cycle through the city, but we just don't have the funds available to do that. And so we try to use a product, we try to stretch it as much as we can, but then we try, we're definitely not hitting any roads that we've recently hit. And when I say recently, that's probably 15 years, unfortunately, you know. And so that's definitely played into that decision tree on which streets we pick.
Any other comments from the council?
Mr. Moody, just one request that I think would be beneficial to amplify what the, what the vice mayor was talking about. This is good news. This is something people should get excited about.
We are doing a maintenance, we're continuing to do maintenance. Staff is working on that with ADA ramps, with striping projects. We wish what it could be more, but we're still plugging along with what we can to keep things together.
Yeah, it was, what I was going to say is, in the packet, we have the map that has the boxes, area A, B, C, D, blah, blah, blah. If we could put together at some point in the future, as far as, these are the streets that we're going to be doing, I think that might help them as well, versus just looking at a map, so that our residents can...
If you, there was an amended, if we go, there's, there's an actual list, and maybe one page farther down, but we could definitely get that out to social media, too, at some point, that actually identified it.
Exactly. That's, that way they, they have a place they can go to find it.
Yes.
Okay, any other comments? All right, is there any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? All right, seeing none, let's bring it back to the council for action.
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
Move to take action on item number four on the consent calendar.
Okay, I have a motion to approve staff's recommendation. All right, do I have a second? And I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Moody. We'll move to business item number 13, which is the water system consolidation, Oswald Two Door Fire Station, number eight. Again, Mr. Moody, you have the floor.
So thank you. So this item, it's a nice, basically, I'll talk a little bit about what's going on. And so we're, we're south Yuba City, so very south, it's actually outside of the City of Yuba City. And so we're talking about the Oswald Two Door Fire Station, number eight. And so recently, staff has coordinated with Yuba City Unified School District and the state for a longstanding water consolidation project to bring a water line down Railroad Avenue, and then west on Berry, to provide drinking, potable drinking water to Berry Elementary School. So almost kitty corner from the school is Fire Station Number Eight. And so the drinking water at the fire, at the fire station is not great. There, we've had some tests done. It's on, it's on a well. There's also been issues with how they fill their apparatus and to meet their needs with water down there. I'd like to add Battalion Chief Carlos Del Rio is here from Sutter County to help represent or ask any specifics regarding the fire station and some of the operations down there. And so with the completion of that water line that was grant-funded, it's, it's outside the sphere of influence of the City of Yuba City. And so, so Sutter County has expressed interest in being able to attain city potable water for the fire station. And so the process to do that is that they technically have to go to LAFCO, because it's outside the sphere, and, and get permission. And then with that LAFCO correspondence, they've requested that there be support from the City of Yuba City. So tonight, I'm before you to ask the council for consideration of whether to, to consider connecting Yuba City, the Sutter County Fire Station, to the potable line there across the way. And so logistically, it's outside the sphere. There's usually, there's, that is allowed under the current rules, if approved by the board, approved by LAFCO for health and safety reasons, because of, with consideration of growth-inducing factors. And so that's why when the neighbors come and they hit me up, we've, we've been consistently telling them, no, because it's outside the sphere. Even though it might be health and safety issues, it's growth-inducing, and it's a big roadblock until they work through CEQA, you know, general plan updates. It's just a no for where that goes. But for public facilities, there is this option in the current code. And so with that tonight, basically, it is feasible. What Sutter County is proposing to do is to ask, and then, then go through the LAFCO process, and then pay their, you know, basically expected connection fees, extension fees, any sort of work onsite that they would need to do. And so with that, I'm asking tonight, council consider adopting a resolution authorizing the Public Works Director to sign a letter of intent to serve the Oswald Two Door Fire Station, number eight, with city water. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. And if Sutter County Battalion Chief Del Rio, he's happy to answer any questions also.
Any questions from the council?
Mr. Mayor, may I add a comment?
Sure.
Ben, you know, we talked earlier about the certain requirements with this four-inch line that Yuba City Unified was able to get the grant for, et cetera. There's a requirement, if the letter of intent is considered and, and may be approved by the council, it would be the responsibility of Sutter County to negotiate if the feasibility of them tapping into that line that is technically owned by Yuba City Unified, correct? Because of the grant requirements.
It gets a little bit complicated, but yes, is the simple answer, is that Yuba City Unified is in contract with the city under an agreement that we have right now for maintenance and for water costs. And so Sutter County would need to, then in coordination with us, figure out how to partner with them on that, on that agreement. And there is some benefit in, in the city's view, is because with such a long dead-end line, turnover of this line helps. And so there has been some consideration with Yuba City Unified, as far as when they have those slow months in the wintertime, when they're not irrigating, or how they run some of that water off, so you don't start getting some byproducts that happen with, with just sitting stagnant for so long. And so there's kind of a win-win that, but definitely, before anything moves forward, logistically, they would have to coordinate with Yuba City Unified to make sure they're a partner.
Okay.
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
This is probably a goofy question, you may have already answered it. Is there a meter on that? I know how much water fire engines take, and I know how much water fire stations use. So, I mean, there'll be a heavy user.
Yes. So a yes times probably four. And so what's going on here, logistically, is that the city with it ending its service, and how we coordinate with the state, we have a meter on the main four-inch up at the corner of Berry and Stewart. And then when it comes down to the school, it's sub-metered, where we have a meter for the landscaping and a meter for the, the domestic side, so we could track how, how much they have to blow off particularly. And then right now, we have it plumbed, so should this happen for the fire stub to the south, that a meter could be placed in there. And so I would expect that, there might be two meters. There might be a one-inch meter that goes to the, to the fire station for showers and drinking water, usable water, and then you would have a larger meter for the, for the fire hydrant or plug to fill.
So maybe a technical question, and maybe the chief may want to answer this one, is are they still going to use what their well to fill up, like the tank water on the fire engines, or are they planning on using the potable water?
I don't think they use the well now, but I could definitely defer.
Thank you for the question. I would state it, my name is Carlos Del Rio, I'm a battalion chief. We currently try not to use the well, because we get maybe 30, 25 to 30 gallons a minute. So we end up having to go to Stewart School to fill up our engines. We have had our water tender sit there for over eight hours one time, so it's, it's not feasible at all. We've actually been super close to getting our well to come completely dry one time.
So we're already giving you water?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Okay, thanks. Thank you.
No problem.
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
Ben, my question is, is this four-inch line adequate to do what you're asking it to do?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Yes, ma'am.
Through the mayor, one more question. I wanted to follow up too with what Robert was asking about Yuba City Unified saying yes. Would they then have to coordinate with the state on some of the specifics of that grant they had got initially?
So, the grant is closed out. Definitely, the drinking water, or, you know, as far as the funding's been closed out, the final invoice is in. The terms of the grant have been met, where there's potable drinking water to the site and it's consolidated with Yuba City. That was really the terms of the grant. And so, this is really, that line is maintained and owned by Yuba City Unified, technically. They can't do anything to it unless they coordinate with the city. But definitely, there needs to be an agreement between Yuba City Unified and Sutter County, and there needs to come back to Yuba City if this gets approved by LAFCO for an extraterritorial agreement that then sets them up that you've done in a few other places. And so, it'd probably be a specialized extraterritorial agreement that recognizes how Yuba City Unified and Sutter County partner, and then it has them follow Yuba City ordinances, so they will get a bill in the mail, like other Yuba City residents, as far as how we bill them and they do the maintenance.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yep, Mr. Moody, my only concern, and we've kind of hit all around it up here, is back to the grant, because I remember when we did that, that was specific to Unified, and they reimbursed us. Just making sure that we are indemnified if the state comes back in any way, you know, that should not be our responsibility. I think we need to help our partners there at Sutter County Fire with the issues they've had, absolutely. But that indemnification needs to make sure it comes from Yuba City Unified, and no way should we be responsible for that.
We could definitely note that in our response to LAFCO and then win the future agreements.
Right. Yep. All right. With that, is there any other comments from the council? All right. Is there any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Hearing none, I'll bring it back to the council for action.
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
Reference item 13, move to approve staff's recommendation.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second to approve staff's recommendations for our agenda item 13. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Moody. All right. Moving on to agenda item 14, which is community sponsorships request from the BMLC. Ms. Kristi Morales.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name's Kristi Morales, and I'm here tonight to go over the community sponsorship. A little bit of background, founded in 1985, the Beal Military Liaison Council is a nonprofit organization whose purpose is to advocate for, educate about, and partner with Beal Air Force Base to raise funds and awareness for the programs that support Beal. Through their efforts, with assistance from local community and corporate partners, has invested more than 1.5 million in quality of life projects and more than 1 million for Beal. The background is that we received a monetary sponsorship for 2,500. The 2,500 would utilize the community sponsorship account for community contributions. Right now, we have a remaining balance of 15,000 in that fund. BMLC is requested the 2,500, which would come from that account. Alternatives would be, one, do not authorize the contribution, two, approve the monetary sponsorship with changes, or provide staff with an alternate direction. The recommendation tonight is to consider sponsorship request for the BMLC, and if approved, adopt the resolution for the 2,500. Thank you. Do we have any questions?
Any questions from the council? All right, seeing none. I know that we have Sammy and Rego here. Would either of you like to make some comments tonight on behalf of the BMLC? There's mine.
Awesome. Thank you very much, Mayor Shaw. My name is Sammy Noll. I am the chair of BMLC, and I just want to say thank you for considering this request. We are very passionate about Beal Air Force Base and their airmen and the impact that the base has on our community. So, I'm happy to answer any questions or whatnot, but thank you very much for your consideration.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for her from the council? All right. Hearing none. Thank you, Ms. Noll. Is there any comments from the public this evening? Any comments from the public on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council for action.
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
Move to adopt a resolution to approve a monetary sponsorship request for the Beal Military Liaison Council in the amount of $2,500.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, motion carries. Thank you. We're moving on to agenda item 15, which is future agenda items. Is there anything that the council would like to see brought back at a future meeting?
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
Chief Runyon, recent happenings in our community, I understand that there was $154,000 recovered at the scene. What happens to that money?
You're referring to the large-scale bust that we had a couple of weeks ago?
Yes.
So, asset forfeiture funds, it depends if it's a case that was generated solely out of the net office, which is local. Most of that money stays local amongst the agencies involved. Some of it goes to the DA's office. It does take quite a while for that money to get through the court system. If it's a DEA case, it depends, and actually, in some cases, we actually end up with more out of that money, a percentage of that. I don't know the particulars on this one. But again, the downside to that is it does take a long time for all those cases to get adjudicated and for that money to finally get dispersed. That money can then be used for usually, equipment and upgrades and things like that that we don't normally have funding for, or might have difficulty getting funding for. That's what we use that asset forfeiture for.
Okay. Question to the city council. If we were to get money to the Yuba City PD, could that be diverted to the people that this affected, the death?
I hate to tell you this, but I'm going to have to give you the attorney response of it depends. And the reason for that is, is that they would normally be considered to be city funds, and there's a general prohibition on use of city funds for individual benefit. They have to be used for the public benefit generally. So, there may, it's general, probably not, but there may be some aspects where those funds could be used for certain things.
Okay, thank you. All right.
All right. Okay. Is there any other items that the council would like to hear come back at a future meeting? All right, hearing none. Then, we're going to move on to our reports communications. And Mr. Bendorf, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. I don't really have anything to report tonight, but obviously, upcoming meetings in the next week or two. We're focused on budget right now. Everything, all budget, all the time, it seems like. And we hope to return with some options and a balanced budget here within the next, hopefully, four to six weeks. Be working with the budget committee and continue to work with department heads. That's a lot of our focus right now. That's it.
Thank you, sir. We'll come to the council then. Councilmember Cole.
Okay, so, as the others, I attended the service for Officer Rodarte and found myself thinking how sick our society is and how that tragedy was unwarranted and just so, so sad for the family. And so, I wished them, wished them all the best and prayers to them and anyone else affected. It was a really sad and powerful service. Got to go to the fire dinner, which was great, and it was nice to see them out of uniform, but they're still working too hard. I thought they would be there celebrating and relaxing, but they were serving us. So, the food was amazing, and that's a great event. And the other thing I did this past week, a couple items connected actually, was I got to tour the Adventist Surgery area, and then also went to an event at a home to get more information on a robot called the Da Vinci Five, which they're trying to fundraise for to bring in. And it's a really great idea because the alternatives that they're using now is just, you know, old-fashioned surgery or laparoscopy. I'm not sure the word, but short incisions that are still a little bit more invasive than the robot would be. And one thing that stood out to me about that tour was a lot of recently-trained or younger surgeons aren't going to be going to hospitals unless they have this robot. And so, it's a good thing to get behind for our community. I listened in on the homeless consortium meeting with Johnny Burke. That was really informative and a lot of information. So, they're working hard over there, along with other organizations too. And then, I'll have a ride-along, actually, with Troy, the homeless liaison, next week. So, I'm excited about that. And other than that, happy Easter to everyone in Yuba City. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Kirchner.
Thank you, mayor. It's been a busy couple of weeks. I'd like to start with giving a little bit of a background on a topic we've been working on with transit, Yuba Center Transit. Yuba Center Transit has been working in cooperation with the Sikh temple, the Gudwar, over in Terrebaueina, shuttling their annual parade since 2007. Lately, some concerns came up with legal counsel and the director on the sustainability of continuing this service, and it basically focuses on funding. And so, based on this concern, a ad hoc was created, and the ad hoc met with the legal counsel and the director. And based on the ad hoc's recommendation to bring forward to a special transit meeting was to discontinue the service, the Yuba Center Transit's involvement with the annual Sikh parade. That was brought before a special transit meeting, and after much deliberation, the board decided to go along with the recommendation of the ad hoc to discontinue Yuba Center Transit's involvement with the Sikh parade. Now, having said that, the director has reached out to the individuals at the temple and volunteered his time to help the leadership of the temple move forward and actually look for other carriers in our region to accommodate them moving forward. But again, it really came down to the possibility of losing the funding, which is a huge, a huge portion of the budget for transit. So, hopefully, with the director's efforts, they are able to find other carriers in our region that continue the needs of the moving people during that event. With mosquito, we talked, we discussed an ad hoc's recommendation to modify the defined contribution benefit package, and they modified that, and the board voted to amend that. There was one Wes Nile case in Livock that we talked about, because it was somebody we knew. And also, we got an update on our, oh, I'm sorry, we had a quarterly review of the mosquito's investment plans. I'll get my notes here real quick. I was privileged to participate also with the memorial at Hard Rock, and that was a first for me. And I don't even have the words to describe the scope of that event and the, just, the law enforcement's, law enforcement presence to that event was just, it was really something to participate in on such a tragic event. The mayor and councilmember Cole and I attended the fourth annual Hayne Avenue Temple Celebration and Parade and were recognized. And then, a week later, the mayor and I attended the first annual celebration at the Boge Temple, which was a, which was a three-day event, was very well-attended, and will be an ongoing celebration for them. Before I close, I would like to recognize the efforts of city staff, county staff, and the levee districts in their attempt, their current efforts to clean up our river bottoms between the Yuba City Boat Dock and Shanghai Bend. If you use that corridor, that levee, it's just, it's just unbelievable, sad, what it's become. And I just want to recognize the folks that were over there doing all the hard work to at least restore some of that to what it should look like for our community. And with that, I conclude my report.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Miss Wally.
Thank you, mayor. Air Quality Control Board that I'm on, the, there's a lot of money available right now for their grant program to new stoves, wood stoves, these type of things. You can go to their website and find out all of what's available to that. There also, right now, we will be going into labor negotiations with that group. So, I am on that policy committee, so I will be doing that. Fire Dinner was excellent, gentlemen. I guess none of them are in here now. Oh, chief's on board. Okay. Yeah, great job, chief. Good time. Breakfast with the bunny on Saturday, it was very well-attended. The three years that I've been going, it just keeps ramping up. We were running out of waffles. We had to keep people at bay and produce more waffles. So... No, it was not Wednesday, it was on Saturday. So, that was a great success. On a sad note, I would like to acknowledge that we lost a educator in the last few weeks, Kiki Parker. She was the spouse of Judge Parker, a family that's been in the area forever. And I just wanted to make sure that I said something in recognition of such a great lady. She was actually a mentor of my wife as an educator, becoming an educator, and the family has served this community for a long time. And with that, I complete my report.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Along with my colleagues up here, I attended the services for Officer Rodarte. Unfortunately, have had an opportunity to attend some of those large-scale memorials. I'll have to say that this one was, came off as one of the most impressive and honorable celebrations of life that I've had the opportunity to witness. I know that there was support from a lot of the regional agencies that came through loud and clear that everyone had pulled together, and that includes our folks at Yuba City PD and other public safety agencies. I also know that one of our local groups, Back the Badge, was instrumental in that group in helping to support that. So, hope that we don't have to do that anymore. But as far as a ceremony or celebration, I think, you know, hard, congratulations to Hard Rock too. You know, it's nice to have a venue like that in the community that provides the opportunity to use that. I think that, you know, my fellow councilman Kirchner spoke about the cleanup at the river bottoms, and this is, it just spurred me. Can we post those pictures? I mean, it was a phenomenal cleanup job. You know, I hate to load up Kristi with more stuff, but I think people don't sometimes realize that we have these efforts that go on. And yeah, that's still never enough, but my goodness, if you saw the trash and accumulated crap, excuse my language, that was down on the levees and, you know, what it looked like after the troops got down there and cleaned it up. I mean, it was impressive. At least it was to me. I attended Secog's transportation meeting. I sent a one-way communication to the rest of the council up here. The big, two big takeaways for me from that were, number one, and I mentioned it earlier, funding for transportation projects, including... funding for transportation projects, including road rehab are, you know, few and far between. It's going to be increasingly a competitive environment to get those. One thing that, that, and maybe I should have mentioned this during agenda, it was very clear to me, when I hear the term fiscal cliff, it's one of those things that perks my ears. And Yolo Transit and SAC Transit, it was explained that those, those particular agencies are rapidly approaching a fiscal cliff. And if they're approaching a fiscal cliff, I begin to wonder about our own Uba Sutter Transit, and I just don't know. And I know we have representatives here, but maybe, maybe it would be time because clearly, Yolo and Sacramento, who serve a lot of folks and have a lot of things going on, whether it's capital items or whether it's just ongoing operations, are, are in deep, deep trouble. And I'm sure they'll be able to extricate themselves from that, but I'd hate to wake up one day and go, wow, what, what's going on with our transit? Especially because, again, transit funds through, through the state are dwindling. Had our Sutter Buttes Flood Control Agency meeting, and the, one big takeaway from that is we had a, a in-progress grant through FEMA. It was a building resilient infrastructure and communities grant to repair levee at the very south end of the Sutter Flood Basin. This was a big, a big grant for a project that really needed to be done. I'm not going to get into the politicalness of whether or not it should have been canceled, but it was. And so, you know, we're going to continue to, to, this was FEMA grant, and I think we all know that FEMA is not necessarily in the great graces of the current administration, but it was a good project, okay? It was something that, that did have a community benefit. And so we're scrambling around at this point. Staff is in our board at Sabuca, working with Congressman Lamalfa to try to figure out if there's a way for us to restore funding for that very important project down there. And with that, headed to Secog later this week and hopefully get some good news, but anyway, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and to the rest of you, thanks for your report so far.
All righty, I'll keep mine very brief. We've all attended a lot of the same things. The past few weeks on mine has been building into this data where the government stuck it to all of us with Tax Day. So, you know, thank you guys for covering. I know you guys have covered a lot for me, and I apologize for missing Sabuca the other day. Attended the DBA meeting. One of the major things coming up on their front is the summer stroll, they've moved it up, it's at the end of next month now, it's not in June, it's May, May 31st. So that was a lot of the discussion they had last, last time. Fire Dinner was amazing, the services. You guys have talked and really captured it well. I'll just extend a thank you to, to both of our chiefs and the departments, because you guys stepped up really big, and not only in the planning process, but just helping our neighbors across the way while they were going through a very, very tough time. So can't say enough about your departments, but just want to say thank you. And then attended both the Haynes Avenue and Boghe Road Temples for their, for their celebrations. I hit the ground running now, we've got a very busy week. Mr. Bindorf, I think I see you about every day for the next two weeks here at City Hall. We have meetings going on and we'll get caught up. Thank you for your patience with me over the past three and a half months, and please remember this week with everything that we've been through in the last few weeks in our community. There is hope, there is a future, and I hope that everyone finds peace and resilience during this Easter Passover week. And with that, we will stand adjourned.